Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's October 18, 2017. If you're unable, I ask you to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And being it is 4:30 in the afternoon, it's time to begin our council meeting. May I please have a roll call?
Brad Hance.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Greg Gels.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Wonderful. First on our agenda is public comments. At this time, if you have any public comments, we do ask that you come up to the podium, share your name and any public comments that you may have. Have it noted, there are no public comments, so we will move on.
I was asked to just share from a Marvane reason that he is concerned with the city's use of TIF funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Would it be possible to get those concerns written in writing in a letter?
I had asked him on a number of occasions if he would do so.
Okay. Thank you for sharing his thoughts, opinion, concern. Number two on the agenda, any questions, comments regarding those items underneath the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, gentlemen. And if there is no discussion, a roll call, please.
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gels.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Okay. Going into new business. Number three, we will now open the public hearing, and this is regarding not to exceed $850,000 in general obligation capital loan notes. This is regarding the infrastructure for the new property across from Ziegler Cat and Baumgart's. At this time, the public hearing is open regarding those general obligation capital loan notes. Are there any comments? Anything received in writing or comments that you, we need to share? There's none, so do we have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Funker.
Aye.
Hance.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gels.
Aye.
And there are two other items that we need to take action on underneath number
three. The first is the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder. Again, this is regarding borrowing for the infrastructure installation on the property soon to be acquired.
I make the motion to approve that loan agreement.
Support.
Thank you. And if there's no discussion further, a roll call, please.
Gels.
Aye.
Hance.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Then the second part is by resolution instituting the proceedings to take additional action. So this begins the proceeding of issuing of these notes. Do we have a motion to approve the proceedings to begin?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Gels.
Aye.
Hance.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, number four, new business. The public hearing is now open, and this is on, you got the time?
Yep.
Not to exceed $1,250,000 in urban renewal revenue capital loan notes. This is in regards to the reimbursement with SCDC for acquiring the said property that would be across from Ziegler Cat and Baumgart's. Are there any questions, comments during the public hearing that need to be shared? And again, nothing has been received in writing? Thank you. There are no comments. May I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Gels.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hance.
Aye.
Again, taking two other items underneath number four for action. The first is the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder. Questions? Same as before, only this is for the land, the 1.25 million. And if there are no questions, comments, discussion, is there a motion to approve the authorization?
So moved.
Thank you, Greg.
Support.
Brad, thank you. No further discussion. A roll call, please.
Funker.
Aye.
Hance.
Aye.
Gels.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
And the second portion is by resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed 1.25 million urban renewal of revenue capital loan notes. Do we have a motion to approve by resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Hance.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gels.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Number five on our agenda is the consideration of approval by resolution, and this is approving the preliminary official statement. And this is information that we share with our potential investors regarding the city's overall financial standing, and this is in the amount of $4,380,000. The dollar amount is subject to change for general obligation capital loan note series 2017B. And Sean, did you have anything extra you wanted to add regarding that?
It's standard. What they did add on was bond insurance. The bond insurance allows the city to have the AA bond insurance rating tagged or in conjunction with the city's A-plus rating, which gives us a better interest rate.
And that's the...
So it more than pays for itself.
And an updated copy that was provided to you at your seat when you came to the meeting today.
And that comes with a strong recommendation from our financial consultant.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. Five. Okay. So then, do we have a motion to approve by resolution approving the preliminary official statement on the $4.38 million general obligation capital loan notes?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do you have any questions? I don't want to proceed too quickly if there's any comments or thoughts, any questions. All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Funker.
Aye.
Gels.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hance.
Aye.
Okay. Going on to number six, we have a consideration of approval of engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney. This would be our agreement that the city has, our bond counsel, Allers and Cooney, on the general obligation capital loan notes, series 2017B, and taxable urban renewal annual appropriation capital loan notes, series 2017C. What this is, is our agreement with our bond counsel, Allers, to hire Allers and Cooney. Any questions?
What do you need?
And I need an approval, a motion to approve this engagement to hire them as our bond counsel.
So moved.
Thank you, Pete.
I'll support that.
Thank you, Greg. No further discussion or any discussion? A roll call, please.
Hance.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gels.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Number seven on our agenda is Kevin Miller is here from SCAT, and he would like to talk to us about the consideration of rate increases with our ambulance service. Kevin, thank you for coming, and if you would, start where you need to, and we'll listen and ask questions.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Miller, and I am the EMT Paramedic Coordinator for the Sheldon Ambulance Team. SCAT has been having a successful year in terms of meeting the demands of our community. On behalf of SCAT, we are proposing to increase our call fees. Each time that our ambulance leaves the garage for a 911 call, it does cost approximately $75, which does not include the equipment or supplies that we must use once we arrive on scene. For transfers, that cost increases to approximately $300. By increasing the prices that we charge, SCAT will be able to better self-sustain. It is important to note that under Iowa code, EMS is not a tax service because it is not classified as an essential service. We thank you for your consideration on this matter and urge you to increase our prices to match the prices that we are eligible to receive from insurance companies. This rate increase is not going to affect who can or who will be transported. It is just in response to the reimbursement schedule released by Iowa insurance companies. SCAT urges every individual that needs emergency services to never hesitate and to always dial 911 immediately. Each of you received a copy of our current prices as well as the prices we are proposing. You also received a comparison chart of the Iowa Insurance Company's reimbursement rates. If anyone has any questions, I can take them now.
Thank you, Kevin. So with our sheets here before us and our packets, mileage would go from 12 to 13?
Correct.
I just want to go over those verbally. The ALS non-emergency call is 550, and that would stay at 550?
Correct.
ALS emergency is now 672, and that would go to 698?
Correct.
BLS non-emergency is 353, going to 368?
Correct.
BLS emergency, 565 to 588?
Correct.
ALS 2, $972 to 1,011?
Correct.
Life assist would go up $25 from 100 to 125?
Correct.
And then the paramedic assist from 250 up to 275 is what's proposed?
Correct.
Thank you. How does that compare? I mean, are we below? Are we, how are we, is that a fair adjustment, would you say, with the area and with our services?
Correct. On an average for the state of Iowa, we are adjusting it fairly.
All right.
The lift assist, is that just when you guys go out and lift somebody without...
I believe that is both fire and ambulance.
Okay. Now, is there another charge if you call the fire department to come out and help lift?
Correct.
Do they bill extra for that?
Correct.
You do?
Yep.
And it does go into the fire?
Okay. I'm just curious if there was an extra additional...
Right. Keep track of which one goes.
Because we do, I mean, that costs the city money to have us roll as well.
Right.
Yep.
So I was just checking.
Okay. And then, do you know, Kevin, when was the last time we might have had an increase? I don't think that really matters, but I am...
I believe 2014 is the last time I saw.
That was the last time? Okay.
Yep.
Council, do you have any questions?
These are, these are based on what insurance is allowing now?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
It's just so we're eligible to get the full reimbursement rate.
And yes, Brad, it would be by a motion for approval. Is there any other questions? Or discussion or comments? I thank you, Kevin, for gathering all that information and bringing it forward to us and...
Thank you.
I recommend that we do go forward with the proposed increases if someone would like to make that motion.
I'll make that motion to move forward on the rate increases. Support.
Thank you. One last question. When would these go into effect? I'm sorry, Kevin, but if, so we're approving this, when, how soon would you put these into effect then?
We would probably put them into effect in the next, maybe, any other month.
Okay. So November 1. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. Any further discussion?
No.
No? Okay. Then may I please have a roll call?
Funker.
Aye.
Hance.
Aye.
Gels.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you again, Kevin. Number eight, we have a consideration of approval of certificate of completion and TIF payment to Glenwood Equities per contract for development. Just to make you, you are aware, this agreement is with Glenwood Equities, which is Dollar General here in Sheldon. I know Sean and Kurt, you both went and inspected, and it is up to par with the dollar amount as far as what they said they would bill to.
It meets the minimum assessment agreement standards.
Thank you. I couldn't think of that word. All right. Do we have any questions regarding the certificate of completion? In the notes provided by Sean, by approving this and an upfront TIF with Glenwood, it's a paid-in-full rebate, and immediately they begin paying their property taxes. And if there's no discussion, questions, or comments, we would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. I think they just got sat out there, too. It's really looking good out there. It's very nice, very cleaning up that corridor wonderfully. Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gels.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Hance.
Aye.
Okay. Number nine on our agenda, we're going to have a couple of staff reports. Either one of you would like to go first, Lyle, Todd? Thank you.
Can everybody get a sheet?
Yes.
Basically, our September 2017 numbers were as follows. We had 257 calls for service. That includes a wide variety of things, but it's anytime somebody actually calls our department and wants assistance of some kind. We made 17 arrests in September. That included from everything from driving while suspended, possession of controlled substances, persons underage, operating while intoxicated, driving while barred, assault and disorderly conduct. We made 47 traffic stops in the month. We had nine accidents reported to our department, and a breakdown of those nine, five were property damage accidents, two were hit and runs, and two were non-reportable accidents. And we issued 31 citations and/or criminal charges in the month. We made 17 incident reports. Incident reports are generated every time it's a little more of a serious offense such as assault, burglary, theft, drug investigations, drug violations, et cetera. And other than that, yeah, we're currently working on several different criminal investigations as well.
Thank you. How do you think, just real quick, East Sixth Street, when that came to our attention, I know, I've personally noticed, have you also noticed that seems to be, people are more aware and are slowing down a little bit more and...
Yeah. You know, and I live on that road myself, so I probably get to see it as well as anybody. And there's, I'm not going to lie, there's times when cars will come by way too fast.
Sure.
But we have made it a concerted effort at slowing people down there, so I think overall it definitely has helped.
I think it has, yeah. So thank you. And we'll, we'll keep that up. So, Joe Public, you'll remember, we're not stopping. Brad, did you permit?
Have you noticed any difference since the RTF has closed down, the number of calls and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's maybe a loaded question. I think it's helped.
Okay.
You know, certainly not, there are still some problem individuals that still live here after the facility is still gone, so to say that our problems have all left...
No, they'll never go away, but just a decrease in...
Yes.
Activity.
Thank you, Lyle, and thank you to your department. Thanks for that report. We appreciate that. Todd, you just want to turn on the mic and have a talk with us.
Sure.
Great.
All right. I'll start with water. We pumped an average of 868,000 gallons a day during the month of September. As far as extra stuff, other than the daily duties that we always do, all the testing and backwashing and whatnot, in September, we completed our annual main flushing. That's something we do every fall. We send guys out actually during the night. They work out through the night and flush veins. It improves water quality, helps clean up some dead ends, and then in some other areas, it helps us with TTHM and HAA5 issues that we sometimes have with testing.
Water, water history?
Thank you. Because I'm like, you're, what does that mean?
Total trihalomethanes and halocetic acids. It's a whole bunch of crap we have to test for.
All right. Thank you.
You don't need to know about it. We take care of it.
Thank you.
Thompson Electric, we have more than a contract with them in the current budget to upgrade our radio communication to the wells. That project is moving along and nearing completion. They completed a fair amount of work in September. We replaced a fire hydrant on the corner of Eighth Street and Seventh Avenue, and we give one tour of our waste, of the water plant to some individuals a seat. Beyond that, reader meeting, rereads, that kind of sort of stuff. One, one minor issue we've been having in water is we've been having more than normal amount of water breaks in one certain area of town. We are trying to figure out, I guess, why that's happening. It's been going on maybe for a year or so. We're in the process now of, and are trying to monitor and see if it's happening a certain time of day. We have a certain customer that's potentially causing water hammer. We're unsure. We're investigating, and we'll get to the bottom of it, get it taken care of. So, that is water. Wastewater. Good news on wastewater is flows were down in September. We had an average daily flow of 847,000 gallons. Not very often would I give you a report and the wastewater would actually be less than the water. That's the way it's supposed to work. That's not typically the way it works here, so we're happy about that. Dewatering, we watered approximately seven, seven tons of solids, which will be all the tons from the other months. Got all of our DNR reporting done. Have full that department. One, we kind of use as a floater to other departments, so one of those gentlemen was up here part of the month helping with the power washing of the building. Dean and myself both spent a lot of time with staff engineers on the new treatment plant. We're moving along. We're starting to talk about things like exterior lighting and grass seed mixtures, so if that gives you any idea, we're winding down to some of the less important details. We're through a lot of the thick of it, so. Highlights of wastewater. Street department, Labor Day took care of a big part of the beginning of the month of September for the parade, barricades, no parking, fencing off for Calpatty Bingo and every other odd request you could think of that happens. It's a lot of our time. We did a fair amount of spraying during the month of September. We're trying to get the borrow pit out near the pavilion, so we did some spraying out there. We did soils. We lighted all the alleys and gravel roads, something we always try to do once or twice in the fall before we get our first freeze. Actually, on the airport runway, general street patching and curb lines, we did. We stoned. Those are finished now. And spent a fair amount of time with one individual from that department, just all fire, SCAT, this building, took a fair amount of time, so. Sent a whopping two burials in the month of September. That's actually a slow month for them, but we're okay with that. It's okay to be slow there.
Mm-hmm.
Main staff there has helped with meter reading every month. Park, same business. I guess the difference in park is, you know, once we hit that second, first and second week in August, we lose all of our hell right now. Well, it's one seasonal employee that's currently working. We've been helping them out with other departments in them that way. Jake and Monty have been helping him out getting, keeping the mowing done. And just an FYI, it's, we are starting to close the parks down. We shoot for October 15th every year. Once it gets past that, it's time to start thinking about closing things down. You get cold nights, we don't want to freeze stuff up, so. Process of starting to close up the bathrooms and winterize and... So, that's all I have unless you have any questions.
How many guys do you have go out and read meters, and how long does it take them to read them all?
Nice weather like this, we can read the town in two days. Winter time, three, maybe four. Then it happens and downloads all the readings, and then if there's highs, there's lows or odd numbers, we go, or no reads, and we go back out and do reread. We don't always get them all at the same time, but probably takes one guy a day to do rereads. And then there's typically some maintenance that is on the house or something just failed, so then you go out and do repairs. So, all said and done, meter reading and repairs associated with it, with a couple of those days, having three guys. It used to be longer. The addition of the, I see sometimes in the bills, the smart points, those are radio reads. As we're installing more radio reads in locations that are either hard to get at or you have a lot of dead walking, it used to be there were some areas where you'd walk for three blocks, one direction. By the high school is a good example. But there's no houses on the other side of the street, so then you walk back to your pickup with nothing to read. The blocks where we put in radio, the college, we put in radio reads just because their meters are hard to get at. The AGP, we put in radio reads just because it's not really a safe environment for our staff. They're not trained to be in there, the hard hats and whatever. So, the installation of them has made things more convenient, but has also cut our reading time down.
You mentioned parks. I noticed there was some vandalism in the city park a couple weeks ago, a couple, three weeks ago. Did the monitors catch any of that?
In the bathrooms?
Yes.
Yes. We do have some images, and I believe the police department is working on that. So, yes. I guess I can't tell you who and say they're caught yet, but we...
I asked for that. I just wondered if the cameras are working. I mean, am I like Hills Park, and we got it out at the tree dump, I think, and are those, are you seeing an improvement because of those cameras?
I don't know. The signage was going to be the biggest thing that stopped them, but there is a great big, here, we're watching you sign right on the park, or yeah, right on City Park bathrooms, and that didn't seem to stop them, so. It helps. I mean, it's got to help, and at least it gives us the opportunity to catch somebody. Without that, I think it'd be, at some point, it's almost impossible for Lyle or two even know who to talk to. It's not a super system by any means, but it, it works. It's been enough with information.
Good.
All right. Thank you very much, Ted. And if we're all ready, we will now move on to number 10, consideration of an evaluation
Okay, I provided a copy of a, a form that I would like to consider for the city manager evaluation. The, and, and there's a couple of changes in the, in the process during the evaluation as, as well. One of those changes would, would be the city manager's self-evaluation that would be shared with the city council. And the council identifying two members along with the, with the mayor to actually sit down and go through the review and, and do the rating. And that's a little more contact with, with a couple of council members. You, you get a, a better, there's a drawback to it and a more realistic evaluation provided. That information is then shared with the entire city council and then the city council as a whole would be able to concur. So it's, it's a, it's a little change from what has been done in the past. Also, this particular evaluation covers seven particular areas and approximately 34, 35 subcategories. The current evaluation totals, so this is a more in-depth evaluation as well. So it's something for the, the council to consider going forward.
So two members with, so only two members and the mayor meet with you?
No. Two council members do the evaluation along with the mayor. If, if there are two that, that have more, and again, if, if there's full interaction with the city manager, then it makes sense to have all council members do it. But if there are certain areas in the evaluation that you're being reviewed against from a performance standpoint, and if, if that particular council member able to observe that, that particular area, either they, they just note that as, as being non-observed, or you're having more organizations go towards having a couple of, of people that have more interaction with that manager doing the evaluation. But again, because it's something that the entire council is involved with, those council members findings along with the mayor's is shared with the entire council.
Okay.
So again, it's, it's just an option to consider.
Alright, we'll have to read through, we're not gonna take any action. I'll read through this, but I think we'll also have to review what our ordinance, if there's anything in there too. So for future discussion, I would encourage everyone to please read through. Okay.
Mayor, just a suggestion, if there's being, if you're looking for two people, the ones that are going off and not coming back would be a good opportunity for them to get their, get their shot at it before they leave.
Thank you Brad for making light. Thank you very much. Okay.
I guess I do have a question. Under number three, it talks about employee relations we don't necessarily know about. How well does he work with an employee?
And that's why having, having two people identified by the council, they're able to spend a little more time having discussions with, with the other employees as well and asking those questions.
That was my question is, can we send this downward, down the chain to get some other employees?
Exactly. Yep.
Because we don't know all the day-to-day stuff.
Right. Right now, what we do is obviously, how many years have we been doing this now? Seven, eight?
I struggle every year with it, you know?
And what we do is we encourage everyone to speak to employees to get feedback as well. But I don't, I just, I don't know about just, how do you just pick two out of five? So that's just something, there's a lot to look over and think about to see if we can't better the employee evaluation.
Just to clarify, are you basically asking for two member, a committee that's delegated and doing maybe more in-depth discussion with the relevant people than would probably normally happen?
Correct. And that, yep. And that's shared with the entire city council, the, and then the council as a whole will, will confer with, with the findings, so then the council as a whole is still evaluating city manager.
But they don't evaluate?
Two council members and the mayor and go in with you, have in-depth talk, but then you come back here, we can go, go into closed session again.
And you go through everything, correct?
Yep.
And if, if, if you happen to see something that, that the other two council members are not seeing, that gives you that opportunity to bring that information forward.
How do we determine which council?
That would be something that the council would
Alright.
Have to decide.
Look it over. We'll have a discussion at our next council meeting possibly, or we'll just talk about the intuitive. Any other questions right now? Because I could see us chatting about-
What's the timeline on this? How soon is it?
Well, we have our next review in December. So we would need to-
You could just do rotate it.
Right.
Every other year, you rotate two on, two off. That fifth year, you have, one guy stays on the next street.
Something to consider.
What's that?
Or not.
Or not? Yeah.
No, 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 no. Nice try.
I, I see, I see Sean's point on this. I mean, it's better to get in-depth with two guys and then, instead of six, you know?
But then you're gonna get in-depth with all of us anyway later on.
You will, but more things might be able to come out too with just a short handful of people.
Right. So read through it. Give me your feedback, especially you two before you leave, because we'll be having our review before you guys leave. Okay? Alright. Check it over. You don't get to leave that quickly in our line. Thank you Sean for giving us all of that. Much to consider and read through. Number 11 on our agenda is consider resolution of support for the 16th Street Iowa DOT MAP 21 application. We need to have this, this approved by resolution for the 16th Street project before we sign the federal agreement and the DOT, with the DOT and the federal agreement. So this is something that by resolution with the city council, approving and endorsing the submission of a federal aid agreement. And this is in regards to the 16th Street project. Do you have any questions regarding approving the resolution of support? And if not, then I would need a motion to approve that.
Slow move. Support.
Thank you. If you have no discussion, have a roll call please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Bunker.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Okay, last comments. Do you have more? Lyle, anything else you want to add? Kurt, just recap on Halloween downtown, trick-or-treating is 4:30 to 5:30, I think?
4:30, 5:30 downtown.
Citywide, 5 to 7. Thank you. Council, do you have any comments? The other thing I would like to point out, next time we meet is November 1st, but I would like this, if you would Frank and Tom and the media, our parking ban begins November 1st, correct? So if we could just highlight that in the media, we would appreciate it. Again, no parking ban on the streets effective November 1st and that begins at what time at night?
2:00 AM.
2:00 AM to 6, thank you, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And that goes through March 31. Okay. Thank you. Just trying to think ahead of what we need to bring up before we meet again. So, and I, that is all I have. Any other comments?
What was the date on that trick-or-treat again, Mayor?
We are trick-or-treating on Halloween. Yes, downtown, 4:30 to 5:30 citywide, 5 to 7. Okay.
Kurt, you don't have to have your costume on yet. Oh, sorry. No. I got, I got one.
Yes.
Is it possible we can get on the agenda to talk about a possibility of releasing TIF back into the district?
Yes, we've actually, yes.
Okay. I mean, just a discussion and if we can have it on the agenda.
Yep. Thank you. Anything else? Do you? I don't wanna, go ahead. What do you have?
So, we received the, the memorandum today from Jeff Shaw, who had, as you are aware, have held the goal session meeting.
Your goal planning session.
So the memorandum is just putting forth the date, which is going to be December 13th. They emailed a number of documents, survey information, so I will be forwarding that email to you so you're able to fill out the survey on your computers and then submit that information back to me no later than Wednesday, November 15th. I'll tally the, the surveys up and then we will have that information ready for the goal session.
Thank you so much.
I, I vote for January 1.
Nope, not gonna happen. We want to hear your dreams before you leave. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Slow moved.
A second?
Support.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Bunker.
Aye.
Hamel.
We are adjourned.
Shut down hard on that.